What went with you?
What do almonds?
I didn't even understand it. Oh, thank you.
So how many is that each then?
Yeah, exactly.
You have some, I have a second bag.
A second bag.
Three almonds for counselor.
Well, David and I were joking about quietly ordering a pizza to have it delivered.
Was there like a story that Obama liked would only like seven a day?
Plenty of, plenty of stories like that. Do you need any almonds, Dave?
I'm so much happier now.
Uh, yes.
Maybe. I think we can have a different one.
Counselor Coley.
Here.
Counselor Penomoff.
Oh, here, sorry.
Counselor Greider is not present. Counselor Fazizo.
Here.
Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Parry Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Eriswood. Mayor Gueva Quorum.
Um, they did an email to Council Brody saying that she thought uh the wind was fine. Um, so the next item on the agenda is conditions of reference to agenda.
Mayor members of the council, thank you. We have completed the construction work on the Park Avenue water line and what remains to be done is to switch over from the old water line to the new water line. Uh, that is planned for, for uh this coming Friday, the uh a construction crew plans to be there at seven AM uh and complete the work within two hours. Uh, they're doing a lot of prep work on Thursday night, so it should be a rather speedy uh connection on uh early Friday morning to get that work done. The uh roadway uh Park Avenue will be closed during that period on Friday, so the contractor can get in and get everything hooked up. Uh, election packets are available for pickup from the city recorder at City Hall during regular business hours. Uh, updated evacuation maps are, have been posted on the website. Uh, uh, the best route to uh uh evacuate your neighborhood in the event of an emergency, uh go to that site and take a look. That's an effort that's been ongoing. I believe uh Chief Snuck has been involved with that as well as our GIS contractor. The splash pad at Chuck Roberts Park is now open from eleven AM to nine PM or dusk, whichever comes first. The citizens' alert program uh is underway. Uh, residents can sign up and receive emergency alerts to their preferred devices. I believe you can contact the recorder's office to uh for assistance with that. Uh, we debate that time is here. It's ongoing. Uh, it started on May fifteenth and the city is also pursuing a we debate on all of its properties and you may have seen a, a city we crew working today on Valley View.
Looks great too.
A lot of handwork. Other notices is that fire danger has increased to moderate beginning on Thursday on lands protected by the Oregon Department of Forestry in the southwest Oregon district. Uh, more info is available at www.SWOfire.com. Uh, and the homeowners assistance and reconstruction program, ARP, is now open and taking applications. Uh, visit the Oregon Housing and Community Services webpage or locally by visiting access at wwwaccesshelps.org. Those are the community announcements that I have today.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any other? Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um, the Talent Public Arts Committee is going to be having an open gallery artist meet and greet coming up on Sunday, June thirtieth from one to three PM. That will be in um the foyer of City Hall. And it's going to be um featuring Sylvia Trujo, who's an um oil painting artist whose work is currently in City Hall as well as um several other artists who have pieces in the glass cases on either side of um TJ. So anyways, people are welcome to attend and light fresh refreshments will be served.
Anybody else? All right. Next item on the agenda, speakers heard on non-agenda items. Uh, at this time, we are going to uh not take any more speaker request forms. Are there any online?
Prior to the meeting or?
Or up to this point in the meeting.
I did not receive any emails today, but I can check the.
Please, yeah. This is uh in order to give uh folks in the virtual realm equal opportunity up to this point to turn in speaker requests.
There are no raised hands.
No forms, okay? And I have none before me, so we'll move on to public hearings. Item five point one is budget hearing for supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Staff report.
Yeah, this is the public hearing portion of the supplemental budget adjustment. Uh, you have the brief staff report, uh budget adjustments that are required for this uh current calendar year are shown there. They are comparatively minor. But because they meet a uh, a statutory threshold, there's a requirement that you uh approve a supplemental budget to accommodate those changes, all of which are under thirty-two thousand dollars. Combined. The uh, uh, so this is the hearing portion of the action and then the resolution uh adopting the supplemental budget is found in nine point one.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, I will move to read the script and open the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear input and receive questions from the community regarding the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four supplemental budget. If you are a community member, um you can ask questions or make a comment by raising your hand in Zoom or pressing six if you are on the phone. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. Uh, so I will now open up the public hearing at seven thirty-three. I don't have any speaker request forms. Are there any hands? No hands, all right. Uh, nobody pressing six. So with that, we will close the public hearing at si- seven thirty-four. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, the, the motion would be in
A little later.
Nine point one.
Oh, sorry. It's part of a, yes, okay, got it. Yeah. Great. Item number five point two is a budget hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. Staff?
Mayor and members of the council, here you have the budget that has been approved by the uh budget committee. Uh, it's the uh complete city budget for twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this portion of the meeting is a public hearing. Uh, I wanted to note this evening that the city received several inquiries about the budget today by email and by telephone with respect to increasing taxes. Uh, and we'll address that more fully in the on the topic on the property tax resolution in the section nine of the agenda. But there are no increases in property tax rates proposed in this budget. Uh, I think there may be some confusion between property tax rates uh and properties tax assessed valuation uh that have gotten mixed up a bit in some of the correspondence that we've uh seen on uh online. But the, the city council is not considering uh and there is no proposed property tax rate increase in this budget uh for for the coming fiscal year. Otherwise, the uh, we've included the summary sheets uh for the budget uh in the packet. Uh, I believe Hector advised me that the full budget uh is available online on the city website. Uh, that includes a narrative uh that describes the various funds uh how the budget is constructed uh and uh just providing a lot of information that the public may find of interest in connection with the city's budget. Nothing further on the public hearing.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Penomoff?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for the clarifications you've been making about the tax increase rumors. Um, you know, it's it's, it's hard, hard things to understand. People, um, people can get confused. Um, I think it's uh, it's only concerning when people who are essentially just trying to sow the seeds of spite um come across as experts when they're not. I think that um what people need to understand is, is you can't raise property tax. You can't raise the property tax rate. Um, those are set by, uh, I'm gonna forget which one it is, measure fifty? Uh, one of those anyway, so it's impossible to do so, but you will see your tax bill, your property taxes go up every year, usually by three percent.
Um, well, no, 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 your assessment will go up by three percent, which does not impact your taxes by three percent.
If you were being taxed on the assessed value, it would be. Wouldn't it?
No. You're, so it's, it's, the math is not, your taxes go up three percent, your property taxes go up three percent because your assessed value goes up three percent. It's not, it doesn't.
Well, obviously, it's very complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
What we agree upon.
Yeah.
Is that we're not raising the tax rate and, and we can't. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would be similar to your income going up three percent, but your income tax rate would stay the same.
Yeah, it's, yes.
I don't, yeah, that's not the way I've seen it. Uh, when I look at the um, at the uh.
Well, the one thing is uh to, to important is to clear up that it's not going to impact your taxes by two thousand dollars a year or uh some ridiculous uh some ridiculous um exponential number that was part of that misinformation campaign. So I think I, I'm glad that you, you talked about it and um, it's a different, it's a different mathematical formula when it's just your assessment rate. It has a much lower impact on your taxes. Any other comments? Sorry that you guys uh went through that at City Hall.
Okay, so the action item on uh the budget is in uh uh the series nine point two through uh nine point four.
So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing then.
So, yes.
Um, the purpose of this public hearing is to hear input and receive questions from the community regarding the proposal, the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. If you are a community member, you can ask questions or make comment by raising your hand in Zoom or pressing six if you are on the phone. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. I will now open the public hearing at seven forty. And are there any speaker request forms?
Uh, Mayor, there are no speaker request forms. A look online.
Thank you.
There are no raised hands.
Great. Um, staff, uh, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven forty. Um, and the action item is later in the agenda. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is um I just want to say appreciate your comments, Counselor Penomoff. Thank you.
Sure. I still want, still want to shade of the malapage and I was looking at.
Yeah, are you? So item point uh six point one is the city manager's report.
Thank you. I'm going to uh cover six point one and six point two uh uh under this section. I have, only have one item to report on, on each of these. Uh, first is that uh today uh the uh city staff and the RV cog staff met with uh Office of Emergency Management Grant Staff to have a kickoff meeting on the FEMA-funded hazardous materials mitigation program upper Bear Creek. Uh, this is a uh grant after fifteen that I believe was submitted about four years ago uh and has been a long time in coming. Uh, I was informed today by OEM that it, under this disaster declaration, this is the last grant to be awarded. So today's meeting on the one point three million dollar project, uh, we went over a lot of detail on how the project will be administered. Uh, RV cog is going to assume the role of administering the grant. Uh, it's a very heavy lift in terms of the federal requirements uh for grant management. We talked about things ranging from progress payments that are received from the state. Uh, they get reimbursed from feds, they send the money to us uh in the timeline for getting reimbursed. It's a reimbursement program. We spend the money, we send in reimbursement and the reimbursement comes sometime later. Right now, the estimated time for receiving a reimbursement ranges from two weeks to six months. Um, so uh when you're doing a large grants like this, uh you, you need to have enough uh of a fund balance to carry the payment to the contractor uh while you're waiting for reimbursement from the state. We're trying to get that timeline more settled, but um they've had some turnover at OEM and their finance department. Uh, so they're struggling with getting payments out. Uh, the funding is uh seventy-five percent FEMA uh and twenty-five percent State of Oregon. So there's no local match. Uh, the local match is typically twenty-five percent, but the State of Oregon is covering that for us. Um, so I, I think we've got things all under uh control and ready to go. With that grant, the uh award letters been made, agreements have been signed. Uh, everyone's on board with starting to move on, on this. There are some prelimin, there's some preliminary work that needs to be done like uh some environmental work uh and getting the uh system set up for uh the grant management. But um we'll uh be back to you with a report on when is that, when the program will actually start uh here, uh hopefully soon. On urban renewal, uh a report on that grant, uh on the peer a project, we also had a meeting uh with the uh, uh, the grant staff at O HCS. Uh, again, it was a a meeting that discussed a, a variety of uh additional information that they need in order to construct the grant agreement or finalize the grant agreement. Uh, the grant agreement draft is currently at the Department of Justice, being crafted by uh the attorneys there. Uh, and uh uh but we went over all of the I was gonna say multitude, but three-page list of additional information that they need. Uh, they mentioned, uh, for example, also that uh as we get to the point of uh I, I actually getting a grant award letter, uh, we'll need to do uh um uh some public information. Uh, there, uh, a public hearing will actually be required. Uh, with the request for additional information included mapping information about the city's internal systems uh and how the program is going to be administered. Uh, we are again here talking with RV cog uh about performing the grant management function. Again, because this is a uh even more complicated uh federal grant uh coming to us through OEM. So uh I was glad to have RV cog in the room today. Um, and they uh they have great experience in dealing with this, so. So as soon as we get all of that uh information together, we need to send it on to the uh O HCS peer staff uh and we'll be getting a uh notice to proceed uh at some point. There is no estimate as to when the grant agreement would be coming. But it was comforting to know that it's in the process so it's real. That's all I have.
Great news. Thank you so much and we don't say it enough. This is one of the tremendous values that RV cog offers smaller cities like us.
Yeah.
We've lo, we've used them for a long time. It's just a great asset for our, our region. Next item on the agenda is uh Counselor Penomoff?
I don't know if you want me to address the news article that this later news article that we've put out.
Yeah, please do.
I'll, I'll just say, um, there was a news article, I think it was the Rogue Valley Times where uh apparently the Board of Commission uh had wrote a devener and said, gosh, this city of talent project uh was, was never approved by the peer selection committee, which I serve on and, and I, we were able to respond with, yes, it, it was approved and in fact, Commissioner Daughter was the one who made the motion into a verbiage. I'm not quite sure what sort of amnesia is happening uh on the Board of Commission, but uh they were uh, they were, there were a lot of complaints um in, in the letter they sent to the governor. Uh, but uh there was very little merit uh to the arguments they made and it is true that in the second decision also made by Commissioner Daughter, the amount of funding that uh was insufficient to uh for the project that was awarded by the selection committee to the city of talent. Remembering that the selection committee is an advisory committee to O HCS, which did decide to fully fund the talent project as well as another project that was only partially funded uh by the selection committee. So essentially, all the approvals of the selection committee were upheld and respected. And um what O HCS did was to make sure that those projects were fully funded rather than somewhat arbitrarily cut as the, the selection committee did. So um, yeah, so I just wanted to uh share that information and, and also very grateful to Gary for um moving this forward.
Yeah, thank you so much, Counselor Penomoff, and for your tremendous service. Um uh honestly, I think that having you join um having you join the selection committee as our representative and with your level of expertise really got uh the process back on track and I'm really grateful for that.
Thank you.
Um, also really appreciated uh the comments the city sent in, uh just stating the record and um and making that all real clear. Um, all right. Uh, and as, does that conclude your city reports for both uh?
Yes.
Both agencies? Item number seven is the consent calendar. Thank you so much, Hector. Um, repeat. Appreciate everything you did to complete that project. Uh, is there any other, uh, does anybody want to take anything off the consent calendar to add add for discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have to say almonds are a wonderful addition to the meeting. They sustain.
I've been up so.
Pass them around, Daniel, through the evening. Um, item eight point two is an update on the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, Upland, Kennedy, Grant. Staff?
Hector Flores will present this matter. He's been uh administering the OWEB program for some time. Uh, and he prepared the report, so defer to Hector.
Uh, counsel, the staff report is in the packet. Uh, there were, there are some things I would like to highlight uh before I take any questions. Uh, the city engineer, um, Galiang Vagoa has been with the city for about three weeks now. Now, we've uh met several times to transition documents and progress um onto her and one, we'll need one more meeting for um final documents that include land use agreements and uh supporting documents uh for each project site. Uh, we met with Casa on Monday. We attend Casa meetings uh so we can stay abreast of the development. And just to know if they're if the project is staying on, on course and uh tried to identify the best planting um season for uh Casa. You know, initially, our estimate was that perhaps in spring of this year, we would have the trees in in that location, but now it looks like it would be closer to mid-October. Um, so attending the, the Casa and Adroit Adroit, who is the project manager, attending the meetings just to stay uh informed and then updating them uh on, you know, when we would be ready to install the trees. Um, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding that we clarified that the staff's understanding that the Casa planting and landscape plan did not include the city right-of-way that's in between the wall and the sidewalk, which is about three or four feet. Uh, we, uh, staff's understanding was that we would perhaps use the extra OWEB trees from a different site to uh install trees along that that uh right-of-way. Uh, however, after the meeting, uh, it was determined that the, yes, they had determine, the, the landscape plan includes trees for the right-of-way, so that's great because it, we can move the, any trees that we thought we could put there, we'll simply have to locate another location for them and put more trees somewhere else, so it'll be, it's a win-win. Um, and it just really boils down to uh perhaps a little bit of a learning on my side. I don't know how to read plans, so when I see a dotted line, a dotted line might represent a, a wall. But in some cases, it may represent just a boundary. Uh, so we moved past that. Um we had a meeting with Rachel Thompson yesterday, so Gao and myself, I'm sorry, I should, I should include that. Any of the meetings that I've had recently do also include Gao Ying. So this uh yesterday afternoon, we met with Rachel Thompson from OWEB to deliver an update and really seek clarity on um changing certain parts of the um of the grant, uh more specifically, how we could use the funds to pay for uh summer place wetlands, which is now going to include a water meter uh associated as uh system development charges and perhaps even uh labor. Uh, Rachel's uh, she was very receptive and uh when we spoke of you know, how to really address that, she identified it as a budget amendment, which uh where we have in draft form at this point, we can, we're work with Rachel to uh uh finalize it, although it is not due until the end. Um, there is a, a final form, a project assessment and completion. uh, finalize it, although it is not due until the end. Um, there is a, a final form, a project assessment and completion uh, report, but that will include a lot of the, the changes that we've included, uh, as we progress with, with the grant. And, um, additionally, we received a little more clarity from Rachel on what we can can do ourselves without asking for permission, uh, quote unquote, asking for permission. And so she really just let us know that there is a lot of latitude and, and decision-making that we can do ourselves. And so that would include perhaps identifying additional sites as what they're related to Mount, Mountain View. As everyone, as our council might be aware, the owners of Mountain View Estates are not, uh, keen to participate in the program. And, um, in previous report, I noted that, uh, um, it does not fit their landscaping philosophy, which is more, uh, uh, lower maintenance based. So artificial grass, gravel, things of that nature, small shrubs. Uh, and they're concerned about, uh, maintenance of the trees and leaves and whatnot. So they're not participating and, and we have identified additional sites and it's in, in the staff report. Okay, so it, uh, can field any questions as needed.
Any questions? All right. Thank you for the staff report and, um, uh, there were some questions, um, there were some people who were, who were looking forward to seeing this staff report on the Urban Forestry Commission. Can you share this report with them or at least let them know that it's on file?
Um, I have communicated with Chair Spelitich and let her know that I would be delivering this report today. And so, um, she's more than welcome to, I can send it to her tomorrow morning.
Or, or let her know where to find it.
I have.
Okay, terrific.
Yeah, I feel like I've communicated really well with, with Chair Spelitich. In addition, I, uh, also delivered this report to our partners at Plant Oregon.
That's awesome. Thank you for, uh, your proactive approach.
Thank you.
Right? Um, the next item on the agenda is nine point one, Adoption Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine one dash R supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Is there any further comments from staff before I entertain a motion?
As mentioned during the public hearing, uh, this is a, uh, supplemental budget, uh, making certain corrections due to unanticipated uh, costs or receipts of, uh, funding. The, uh, amounts are, are comparatively minor. Uh, we've, uh, cast the approval of the, um, supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal twenty twenty-three and two um, uh, twenty twenty-four zero nine one R, which we, uh, proposed for your adoption at this time. There's a proposed motion in the staff report on page sixty-five.
Thank you. Councilor Colley?
I'm ready to take a motion.
Any other questions before I entertain a motion? Hearing none, Councilor Colley?
I move to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine one dash R, authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment, increasing resources and making appropriations for the City of Talent for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Can I read your, I don't have a packet in front of me. Um, so we have a most anticipated resolution, twenty twenty-four dash zero nine one dash R, authorizing a supplemental budget, adjusting, increasing resources and making appropriations for the City of Talent for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Colley?
Yes.
Councilor, uh, Panemirov?
Yes.
Council Greeters not present. Councilor Pestejo?
Yes.
Council Byers?
Yes.
Council Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Uh, nine point two is Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine two dash R to make budget appropriations and to adopt the City of Talent fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five annual budget. Staff report?
Mayor members of the council, uh, the staff report covers.
I'm sorry, one, are there any recusal? Thank you, Council Panamara. I'm gonna have to get reminded of that. That's for, for, oh, that's right, but it's important for me to ask. Staff?
Staff, this, uh, report covers, uh, items nine point two, nine point three and nine point four. Nine point two is the, uh, budget document that's been approved by the Budget Committee. Uh, and, uh, it's summarized in the, uh, in the staff report. It included the data sheets in the, in the packet. And again, uh, the public can review the full document online. Um, the budget, uh, uh, was a subject of, uh, more than one budget committee meetings and is ready for adoption. Uh, the, the resolution ninety-three dash R um, would categorize and impose the City of Talent property tax rate um, for twenty twenty-four. As mentioned earlier, this is, uh, adopting the same rate that is in effect now and has been for some years. Uh, and the city council does not have the authority to adjust the rate without voter approval. And the final resolution in this series, ninety-four, uh, ninety-four R uh, certifies that the city is eligible to receive state shared revenue uh, and that it agrees to accept state shared revenue. Um, so you, uh, you would need to adopt each of these resolutions by separate motion.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any questions? All entertaining some motions. Council Byers?
I move to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine two dash R to make budget appropriations and adopt the City of Talent fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five annual budget.
Second, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine two dash R to make a budget appropriations and adopt City of Talent fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five annual budget. Any further discussion? Council Perry Miller?
Just a big thank you to, uh, Felicia Hazel, who was our budget, uh, chair this year and couldn't have done it without her.
Thank you. Um, and to the rest of the committee as well. Great job, everybody. Um, if there's no further discussion, we'll take a roll call, please.
Councilor Colley?
Yes.
Councilor Panemirov?
Yes.
Councilor Pestejo?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Council Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Adoption Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine three dash R to categorize and impose City of Talent property taxes and establish City property tax rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Are there any further questions? All right, we'll entertain a motion. Council Perry Miller?
I move to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine three dash R to categorize the City of Talent property taxes, impose City of Talent property taxes and establish the city's property tax rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine three dash R to categorize City of Talent's property taxes, impose City of Talent property taxes and establish city's property tax rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Colley?
Yes.
Council Panemirov?
Yes.
Council Pestejo?
Yes.
Council Byers?
Yes.
Council Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine four dash R to certify city is eligible to receive state shared revenue and elect to receive state shared revenue. Are there any further questions on this before I entertain a motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Council Byers?
I move to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine four dash R to certify the City of Talent is eligible to receive state shared revenue funds and elect to have the city receive state shared revenue funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five.
Second. Uh, there's a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine four dash R to certify the City Talent is eligible to receive state shared revenue funds and elect to have the city receive state shared revenue funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Council Colley?
Yes.
Council Panemirov?
Yes.
Council Pestejo?
Yes.
Council Byers?
Yes.
Council Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. And also thank you, Tessa, and thank you, Gary, for, uh, delivering a good budget this year, uh, for taking the time to outline um, our best pathway forward, given, uh, the challenges that we, along with just about every city in the area are facing this year and, um, and, uh, also sorting a really good and smooth budget process, one of the smoothest ones I've seen in years. So thank you so much for your good, hard work. Um, all right. Nine point five is agreement between City of Talent and Phoenix Talent School regarding school resource officer for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five academic school year. Staff report?
Chief Snook is here to present this item.
Thank you. Good to see you, chief.
So before you, is the updated contract for the twenty-four point five school year. Uh, the only changes that were made to the contract was to add, include the talent, uh, elementary school. If my version is better, it's definitely more, so. But if they increase what we need on receiving from the school district, then uh, as we're having to consider the most schools in our school year. Um, and the question, I did meet with, uh, Brad Barry last week to review the contract and, um, that was the only idea that we made and, um, we're in agreeance with this, um, here having the S R O in the school five days a week during the school season, uh, was very successful. Many hours spent, uh, uh, giving presentations to children, outreach and also, uh, meeting issues, um, behaviors, shoes, um, referring kids to services and so forth.
Any questions, Council Panamara?
Yeah, so my question is, I see that, uh, the funding increased from forty to seventy-five thousand. So that's talking about the school district budget. I, I read this thinking there's no impact on the City of Talent budget for this change, or is there?
So the school district reimbursing the city up to seventy-five thousand postponed. So that does not include their wages from summer, uh, pretty much covers, um, at a top-down lease officer salary. It covers, um, during the school year from September, oh, June.
It's, so, okay. You probably gave you all the information, but I just want you to put it together. What we were paying last year towards the S R O versus what the city's paying this year towards the S R O? Is there a difference in that?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe so, I'm just saying. Um, so last year, the first year that they increased it to seventy-five thousand and previous years it was up to forty thousand. Does that answer your question?
I, so, so what I'm imagining is there's, there's more, um, hours devoted towards this work, but the, the school district is picking up the bill for all of that. Cause I, I was, I had thought that this was paid for by the City of Phoenix and the City of Talent. I thought we had, the cities were splitting the bill on this, but I think that, I, I didn't know.
They have a separate contract for the City of Phoenix for their S R O and high school that are contract. Some of the work is different. Um, I didn't compare and measure the last year I did. Um, and they're, they reimburse us more than they do in Phoenix, is my understanding.
I remember last year you telling us that they, um, once the school year is over, um, the S R O becomes part of your force during the summer months when you, when you need that additional help.
That's correct.
Vacations, that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, to fill in for vacations and, and actually, the other side of it is that it's in the contract is that the S R O, they don't really want them taking a lot of vacations during the school year. So he's very limited on the time off that he gets. And so he does take some vacation in the school. He's off two weeks right now. And then he'll return and he will assist with some emergency coordination, of course, um, some projects that we have that are, um, need to be finished and then, uh, fill in these officers, other officers taking vacations.
Yeah, my point being that that's what happens with that additional salary. It's that it gets, it gets used by the city.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the summer, June, July and August is, is used by the city.
Great. Council Colley, did you have a question?
That was my question, is what the S R O does when school's not around.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion. Council Colley?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Phoenix Town School District for a school resource officer for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five.
Second, we have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Phoenix Town School District for a school resource officer for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jen. Our chief, I'm sorry. Um, nine point six is the adoption of Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash zero nine five dash R delegating purchasing authority and establishing purchasing limits for the city staff. Staff report?
Mayor members of the council, the city council adopted a resolution last August establishing purchasing authority limits for the city, for city employees. We've had, uh, several changes in city employees since then, uh, including me. Uh, the city manager reviewed the matter, uh, spoke with the finance staff, uh, looked at, uh, what other cities are doing in this area, uh, found that, uh, some of our limits uh, on the spending authority for the city manager and a couple of department heads were the lowest in the region. Uh, we, uh, are recommending an increase in the, um, uh, authority limits for, uh, the city manager, uh, and, um, I believe also the, if I can find the right page. Which are not. Oh, here we go. So it would increase the city manager's, uh, limit from thirty-five to fifty thousand. Uh, the, uh, finance director's limit would remain the same. The city planners authority would, uh, remain the same as the former community development director. The police chief's authority would increase to twenty-five thousand and the city engineer would, would, uh, replace the public works director, which no longer exists, uh, at twenty-five thousand. So the main department heads with operating departments, police and public works would have uh, a twenty-five thousand dollar limit. Most of the others remain the same.
What? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any, are there any questions? Council Panamara?
Thanks. Um, just so I understand, so let's say I'm, I'm your city planner and I want to go out and spend five thousand. I have to get, do I have, still have to get permission from you, my boss, the city manager, or can I just go out and do it?
Purchase orders, probably.
Uh, if it's within his budget, uh, he can, uh, uh, make that funding commitment.
With a purchase order?
Uh, with the con, in that amount, it would usually be a contract.
Okay.
So it would have to come through, uh, my office.
Now, as a, as a question, all of these limits, except for the ones for the city manager, are subject to, you know, the natural checks and balances that you have in.
Right. It worked with the finance director to make the purchase.
Right. Okay. So it's not like they're gonna get a plane ticket in this.
Uh, I, I would. Any other questions? So you said, uh, chief is at twenty-five, up from what?
Ten.
And was that the only other increase? Finance director is already at fifteen.
Right. Uh, so the only other addition is the public works administrator.
Yeah. And they were formally at what?
Uh, there was nothing on the list.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Council Colley?
I move to adopt Twenty Twenty Four I move to adopt twenty twenty four dash zero nine five dash R delegating purchasing authority and establishing purchasing limits for city staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Did it go away?
It just went blank. Sorry. What page is that motion on? One sixteen.
The motion is also basically exactly what's on. Nine point six on the agenda.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to adopt. Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine five dash R. Delegating purchasing authority and establishing purchasing limits for city staff. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Colley?
Yes.
Councilor Pernemroth?
Yes.
Councilor Pestezo?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Councilor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Um, eleven point one is review of the look ahead. Staff?
And so we have a summary of the look ahead that we put in the package by this time. Uh, and we have some. Have some items that that we're going to be adding at the staff meeting this week. Uh, I also asked the city attorney to provide me with a listing of projects that he's working on. Uh, or that are on his plate. Uh, which he did, and I'll be speaking with him about what dates to plan for. For some of those items. Uh, but uh. We'll bring that back to you as well. Just talking about the city attorney, got a really poor point. Time sensitive, so some items such as the natural gas issue. Because we uh, can't do it all right now.
Do we have any, I mean, that is an important item, do we have any?
Well, we want, the, the city attorney and I discussed this today and we uh, we think it's a subject for. Further discussion with the council to get better direction on, on what you want us to come back. It's a little unclear to us as to whether you want us to take the proposed resolution. From uh, the uh, the committee, rework it slightly. Or come up with something different or do some additional research. You know, who to engage in the preparation of.
Do we have, do we have a recommendation from, did we adopt the recommendation from the committee? If there a recommendation made and we adopted it, am I remembering that right?
I, I, there was a recommendation from the committee, a request um, for the council to adopt the resolution and um, we thought that. Staff would want to weigh in on it. But not, we were not expecting grand revisions or anything, especially since the policy aspect of it was rather, in the resolution is rather vague. It's just actually um, investigate authority, we need to do more research, so. With the passage of the resolution, we're just saying, we're committed to doing more research and. And most of what's in the resolution is already in the comprehensive plan, it's just kind of. Kind of refreshing, refreshing uh, the commitment um, that the city's already made. Um, but I'm happy to uh, sit down with you, Dave, and and go over the concerns and and bring that back to the committee if there's um. And, you know, anything that we can do, but I, I, I don't see this at this point as a, a huge lift. Versus Ashland, that's actually crafting an ordinance, okay, so this is, this is. Before, several steps before um, that step, which would require a lot of, you know, uh, uh, legal expertise. So, um, Dave, I'm happy to sit down with you and and talk through, um, it would be nice to have this uh, before us. Um, I'm thinking either July or August. Uh, if that, if that works um, for you.
Probably does.
Okay. So should I, should I, I'll, I'll, I'll figure out a time that we can talk or something, that'd be great, thank you.
Does that work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay. Any further, is there further discussion on this item?
No.
Okay. On, on, on the uh, look ahead.
Right, if there are any items that you don't see there that we should have there, let us know.
Great. It's just, um, well, the uh. We'd already discussed and agreed to, um, you're bringing back some proposals on the work that you're doing with Salazar and.
Yes.
So that we have an opportunity to review it in due direction as well, correct?
Yeah, I'll be uh, putting that on the July seventeenth. Counsel, Jen.
Um, all right, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to say how much I love this look ahead and I really appreciate letting these things out so far in advance, it's, even though things move, it's super helpful.
Uh, is there any old business that? Anybody? All right, great, okay. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda, we're in the communications, there are none, uh, and so this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty.
Committees.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip over something? Number eleven committee report, are there any committee or commission report? Uh, Council Colley?
Uh, just one thing, um. Discuss this with Gary a little bit, but the uh, Talent Urban Forestry Committee might be moving. Its meeting time to better fit with the new uh, public works administrator. Attending parts commission meetings as well as. Urban forestry committee meetings, which happen to be at the same time on Wednesdays. So that will be a change that will be coming down the pike and I'll update you on what the meeting times revert to.
Excellent. Council Penomar?
Thanks, yeah, so I've, I've been to three meetings, um, the first and the most fun was the Traffic Safety and Transportation Commission, which was very ably uh chaired by our chief, Chief Snook. And uh, we talked about all sorts of transportation things, it was really well attended by um, everybody who's there, our two community members. Um, Gao Ying, um, Nick and uh, Hector and of course, chief and uh, it was really cool. And um, so I think we agree, we're looking to meet every other month, but we're gonna have to revisit the bylaws and see uh, exactly how that's supposed to work. Um, I actually, should I just go for a moment?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and uh, to get up for talent bet, um, to get up for talent, um, we're looking at. Our bylaws talk about um, some, something to do with uh. Um, responding to emergencies, I know that's been of interest to the committee in past years. What isn't clear to me is whether or not the question was raised, whether or not this council approves the bylaws. At some point, it would have been before my time, would have been before twenty nineteen, so I'm not sure. How that worked and exactly what the, what the committee uh, responsibility is with respect to that. To the, in some ways, it seems more like a staff function, so there was kind of that question raised, I don't know if you remember.
I don't remember.
So, but yeah, because those bylaws were a little bit weird, so. I'm not sure they ever came before council.
Uh, well, um, we can certainly take that up now. I mean.
Uh, the bylaws?
Yeah. I don't mean right now, but I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and just like revisit that. And uh, finally, uh, RVMPO, uh, Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, which is regional, um, I, I say what, I attend um, the technical advisory committee meeting. And uh, Gaiying was uh, there and also, you know, I just, uh, just everybody there at RV cog was just really impressed with her and um, the questions she, she was asking and showing a lot of curiosity. Which we don't get a lot of uh, at those particular meetings. But uh, of, of more importance next, I think it's next week or the week after at the policy committee meeting of the RVMPO, the Creel. Our Creel uh, project is coming up uh, for funding that we're working on with ODOT, so we're, we're excited about that, having um, some pedestrian access to the greenway down on the south side of town. That's all I got.
Anybody else? All right, so uh, with that, we will adjourn meeting at eight twenty four. Are these, were these useful tonight's hearing?
I was gonna uh, s- say the. Is the uh, is what, I, I, I'd be able to perform when I could. They, the earlier, um, we, no, we drive, but then they, raising your hand and zooming all the information, but now I'm like, that's just for public hearings.
Right.
They'll need to be real time, right, so they don't have to sign up for public hearings.